I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Ham.
Here.
Tuhill.
Here.
Estee.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Here.
Gandy.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Roe.
Here.
Counsel, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to add the consideration of Jay Thompson's mailbox, as was supposed to be on the agenda for this week.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Second by Tuhill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, great, that's been added. There's nothing else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of that September 23rd, 2024 council meeting. Approval of the October 11th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $158,966.80. Acceptance of the Volunteer Center Committee Minutes. Resolution of Classification in the Waste Water Department. Approval of liquor license for the Hy-Vee Market Grill. Approval of ACH payments to Department of Revenue in the amount of $26,030.13. Approval of special claims to WEX in the amount of $3,039.17. Approval of total claims in the amount of $616,477.82. We had one claim more than $75,000 to Iowa Bridge and Culver L.C. for $233,936.14.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
I did approve the claims and they seemed in order.
Thank you. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Tuhill.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes, I'm just abstaining from the minutes of September 23rd because I wasn't here.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm going to put that right there.
Okay.
Okay, so public forum appearances, we have to, we do have Klingner and Associates, presentation of fire station plans. And there they are. So I'm hoping I can hold you guys to 10 to 15 minutes. Is that possible?
Yeah.
We've got a lot on our agenda tonight, so yeah, come on up.
Okay.
And tell us who you are and tell the community who you are.
Sure. Hi, I'm Stephanie Breakville. I'm an architect with Klingner and Associates. I'm here with Russell Brizzy, also an architect with Klingner and Associates. So we're two of the architects and designers working on the design of your new fire station. So we wanted to-
Get closer to the mic.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So we wanted to speak to you tonight because we are approaching completion of the design documents to be able to go out to bid. So we wanted to give you guys just a bit of an update, answer any questions you may have. So can you please go to the next slide? All right, so I'll give you a brief overview of the Fire Department and some of the key features that are included in it. It does include a three-story training tower, which is something your current fire station lacks. There is a training tower, but it's relatively small and not able to be used very well, so we've added a training tower. It includes a large apparatus bay for 11 vehicles, four large trucks, three smaller trucks, and four trailers. So that fits the department's whole fleet of vehicles inside now, whereas currently they are spread about around several different buildings around town, so it's hard to sometimes marshal all the forces they need to respond to, to a crisis. It does include a large multipurpose room and training classroom space over on the east side. And a portion of the building is going to be constructed as a storm shelter. So in the event of an emergency, a large storm hits, the firefighters would have an area where they could remain protected and then be able to respond to the emergency situation once the storm has passed. So you can see the diagram has multiple different colors on it, so that is related to the decontamination process. One of the main drawbacks of your current station is that it's not really up to current standards for firefighter health and safety. There are lots of contaminants associated with firefighting that gets on their clothes and on their, on materials they use. So there should be a decontamination process where there is a red zone where decontaminating material, or contaminated materials may be present, a yellow zone where you are decontaminating those materials, and then a green zone where those contaminated materials never reach. So you have three distinct zones to try to promote more health and safety for the firefighters.
I'll just, I'll just add as well that the-
You want to come closer to the microphone, please?
Yes, I'll just add that the yellow zone for the decontamination is also showers and clean area for the firefighters. So it's important that not only the gear's clean, but when they go home to their family and leave for the day, that they're able to, to clean themselves for cancer-causing carcinogens and things that may be present. So it's both the gear, the equipment, but also the firefighters themselves to protect themselves and their families and the public when they go out and leave the fire station.
So those are the, the key elements that we wanted to highlight and make sure you knew were part of the building. There are obviously other spaces, there are other support spaces, things like that, but those were the main things I wanted to hit. Are there any, any questions about what is included, what is not, before I move on?
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned the storm shelter.
Mm-hmm.
And can you point that out exactly? Because what I see from the, the north and south side of the building, some of those have been flipped from previous drawings, correct?
So the large rectangle on the upper right, that kind of-
Yeah.
That is the storm shelter.
That's what I thought. And so I was surprised that that had, a lot of that was down below previously, correct?
No, it's always been on the north side.
No, I mean some, all those rooms.
Oh, um, well, the storm shelter has always been on the north side. Some of the rooms have flip-flopped a little, but-
Yeah, that's what I mean. The rooms have flip-flopped, and I'm surprised it's not chopped up for the storm shelter area, but maybe that's okay.
Well, the storm shelter perimeter is basically that rectangle, and then there's just rooms within it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dark line here.
Right.
And those are all like, those are all support spaces for the, the station.
Yeah. Okay. And did it just work out better? I was, I'm just curious how, why we flip-flopped some of the spacing? And I'm not saying it's wrong or anything, I was just curious how that process got, those rooms got changed from different parts of the building? Just was curious.
I'm not certain which rooms you're, you're referring to. There's basically the, the main things that the storm shelter needs within it are plumbing facilities, so those have always been included in there.
Okay.
We have, EMA facilities are included within the storm shelter, so they have, their storage area is within there. The IT room, like the, all the electrical, is coming into that space, so it's all protected.
Great.
And there's a small EMA command room. So in the event that, you know, much of, much of Fairfield, God forbid, is leveled, and even most of this building is leveled, they would still have a command room within that storm shelter.
Great.
And there's also a generator in there to be able to power both the storm shelter and the building if the whole, if we still have the building to, to power, it can, it can run the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I think I can answer your question.
Well, and I just, you know, without seeing the previous one, I'm not being, I know I'm not being very clear, it's just what I just-
No, so the, the storm shelter area was more of an L shape at, at one point. And so some of the things that changed was the classroom space became more rectangular rather than a square.
Uh-huh.
And so by making the storm shelter area a rectangle rather than L, less corners, less foundation, things that were all money-saving items in order to get this into the budget. So it's, the spaces are all there, as Stephanie's saying, you just moved-
It's a more efficient shape.
More efficient shapes, yeah.
Yeah. And I can't see all the definitions either, just like dermatology, right?
But yeah, that's, that's what changed.
Gotcha. Yep.
All right, so the rest of the presentation is essentially just some images, so we can, we can scroll through those and I can show you. Here's a view of it from the outside, so this is from the corner of Briggs and Third, basically looking at your main entry. That, that bright red canopy would be the main public entry. And then down, down the street, far from you, is all the apparatus bay, like all the overhead doors for the vehicles. So this would be your primary view from the corner of Third and Briggs. The next one is from Fourth and Briggs, looking at it, so you can now see two sides of the apparatus bay, so all the big doors for all the vehicles to go in and out. We're planning to do, you know, some, some statement signage that shows it's Station, Station 1, Fairfield Fire Department, the address of the building, things like that. Go on to the next, please. This would be your main entry upon coming into the building, there's an entry lobby, so off to the right here is where you would go into the multipurpose room. We're including several display cases to be able to show fire, fire station memorabilia, try to highlight the history of the department. They have several like artifacts of, you know, old firefighting equipment and things like that, it's really cool to show off. So we wanted to create that as a feature. This is within that, that multipurpose training room I spoke about, so you have room in here to hold meetings or training sessions for the firefighters. The city could use it for meeting space if they needed to. It could also be overflow space in the event of some sort of disaster. You know, it's adjacent, it's very close to that EMA Command Center that I, I spoke about earlier. This is additional space that could be utilized if you have other agencies or entities coming in who need to set up mobile offices or things like that. And then we've got a view down the main hallway, so down at the far end is into the apparatus bay, this is kind of the main artery. You come in that entry hall, and then there's a, a long hallway that stretches east to west. The apparatus bay is down at the end, like your day room is off to the right, and then all the storm shelter, or off to the left, and all your storm shelter stuff would be off to the right. So we're trying to incorporate some vinyl graphics, things like that, that would show more history of the station, you know, we were thinking like a little timeline with a map of the, a map of the city of Fairfield and try to highlight your history, because they've got a long history of being a fire department in, in the city. So we wanted to keep that at the forefront.
So I just was going to add that some of these renderings, in order to try and show enough of what's going on, or have a little bit of a fisheye or wide-angle lens, so that hallway kind of goes through, but it's probably only about the length of this room plus maybe a third or half the room again, so it looks a little long and drawn out on there, more to show that there's kind of a, a small display case and some graphics and an opening into the, the day room from here. But just so it didn't, didn't come across as too, too long and narrow.
All right, so that's what, that's what we have to present. Are there other, any, any other questions I can answer? Concerns? Yes?
I don't see any emergency staffing center that would include police.
So in the event that there was an emergency that, that required the police, they would be able to set up in that command center with everyone else and potentially also use that training room. It, it would be at the discretion of whatever the emergency is and, and who is needed, all those entities would be welcome to utilize those spaces.
I had a county elected in Maryland where they had a county emergency center, because we would get hit with storms, and they had representatives from the police, fire, emergency, and also from, like my department, tech department, sort of, communication lines.
Right.
So we also use the law center for that currently, so. Okay, counsel, anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to add that if the front public entry, which is in the green area, at those doors there, there are three offices as well, and so that's an office for fire chief, an office for the active on-duty driver, and an office for emergency management or EMA. So those are right at the public entry with, with visibility to that entry. So if there were public coming up during like a non-emergency event as well, that's where the office is, it's not buried in the building, so it has that public welcoming kind of connection at the, at the entry door to the building as well, so.
Good, great. Thank you. Counsel, is there any other questions? Very good, very efficient.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing live, in real, in real time.
Yes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to resolution, action items, and ordinances. We're going to take up Jay Thompson's request here about his mailbox.
Mayor, I would actually move to approve reimbursement, since we've asked him here and not, and don't have our representative here to speak on the Streets Department's behalf. Jay's taken his time to come to another meeting, and I would like to move to approve to reimburse him the 130 whatever-odd dollars it was.
Yeah, do you remember how much it was?
Right.
I did not bring anything with me.
That's okay. Whatever the amount was that was requested.
Yeah, it was a little over $100, that's what I recall.
It was just for the mailbox and the post.
Yeah. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to go ahead and pay Jay for his mailbox and his post, and he'll get us that amount. Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Kennes.
Yes.
Tuhill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, if you'll bring in that document to Rebecca.
You guys should have that from the last meeting, it's, the receipt was included.
Was it? I just, my memory's not that good anymore. Okay, thank you.
I can bring it in, I can bring my, my copy of it again.
Okay, if Rebecca doesn't, well, she probably has it, but for some, yeah, she says she's got it.
It was in the presentation.
Yeah. Okay.
We've got it.
Sounds good. Okay, next action item, consideration to set public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimate for the fire station. So that will be, public hearing will be set for Monday, October 28th, 2024 at 7:00 P.M. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Tuhill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, great, that was approved unanimously. Action, next action item, consideration of amendment to engineering services agreement for construction phase for the reconstruct tee-hanger taxiways phase three.
Okay, so the next two items are closing up a few bits of paperwork for Crawford Murphy Tilly, the consultant for the airport. The first item is related to additional expenses during the construction, related to additional mileage, expenses, non-salaried expenses, and testing, sorry, soils, soils testing. The total cost of the amendment is $17,600. This is covered by the grant, so the local portion of this is $1,760.
Melanie. I thought it said $69,000 was a- Oh, not to exceed $69,000, what the actual cost is.
Yeah, that's, that's what it had started off as, and so there was additional costs because the project went over two construction seasons, and there were, and two weeks longer or a week and a half longer than what they had budgeted for, and there were some other factors.
So what's the current amount? Sorry.
So the total amount is $17,600, but with the grant amount, the local share is $1,760.
So we need to prove the $1,700?
Yep.
So I would approve the $1,700 amendment to the engineering services agreement for construction phase for the reconstructive tee-hanger taxiway enough phase three?
It's actually $1760.
Right.
$1760.
$1,700. Seven, $17,600.
Sorry, $17,600.
And then the local part is our $1760.
Yes. That's just an FYI.
I thought I asked you if you can add to approval.
It's a big number, but we are paying, and FAA had approved this, which is why it took so long to get it to you, because we-
We are approving the $17,600, but we just have to know that the $1760 is our portion.
Yes, yeah, and that's one reason why it took so long to get it here, because we took a lot of time to get FAA approval of this amendment before bringing it to you, so.
I would second that motion. I won't hang it up any longer.
Yeah.
Okay, so move by Flornoy, second by Estee, to approve the $17,600.
I don't see any more puns we can get in before the next one.
Okay, any other discussion? None, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Tuhill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. So now we go to the basically same thing for special services.
Well, this is for rebidding the projects, the council authorized this work, but we did not authorize the actual agreement. It's $4,500. It is for rebidding it when the project, we didn't get any bids the first time, and so then we rebid the project a few months later, and they do have changes that they had to make with that, and so 100% of the, that $4,500 is our cost.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? None, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Tuhill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is I, on the matter of the sale of 504 South Sixth Street. Before I open the public hearing, we'll just make a note that we did have Realtor look at the value of that property, and they said it had a value of $10,000. Do you want to say anything about the rate of return portion that you put together?
So the calculation on the rate of return is going to be-
Oh, you want me to bring it up?
Seven years roughly, with, without a tax abatement, for $7,148 is what our loss would be to recover those costs, and with the tax abatement, it would be 10. So that's kind of where we're at, is the, the value of the property is $10,000, and we have to look at the long game and recover those funds. The house will be there another 50 or 100 years that we can collect taxes on, so eventually we'll recover what we've lost.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this? Ed?
Good evening, counsel. Ed Boy with Grow Fairfield, and we have made an offer to you this evening for $10,000 for the corner lot, vacant lot, 504 South Sixth Street. Our intention is to make this the first project in our neighborhood revitalization program, where we will provide affordable housing on infill city lots. This will be a demonstration project, and I view it also as a collaboration with the city. We haven't pursued any, any other lots, we really want to do that, do it there and publicize that it is a collaboration and a demonstration project. So we have made an offer of the, the $10,000. Ownership will allow us to apply for one of the homes for Iowa, which is part of the Iowa Prison Industries Program. There are three of them in town at the present time as part of the Habitat for Humanity Development on 12th Street. We are, we are planning to utilize this program as much as we can. They only make 40 or so homes a year, and they are in demand all over the state, but they do give you the most affordable option at this point in time to make a home, you know, available for a family that is really starting out and looking for that, needing that kind of a price point. We also have a second project that we're going to be doing at the same time. We've brought in a, an investor that is going to be the inaugural investment in our Housing Trust Fund. So we are forming a Housing Trust Fund that will, that will basically accumulate donations from employers who are very concerned about housing in the community, and we want to provide developer incentives through this, through this process. There are a number of cities around Iowa who have something similar to this, so we're looking at getting this thing started. I've gotten very encouraging responses from our major employers thus far. Would like to attend your work session if you have housing on the agenda for that day so that we can discuss how we would use the, the incentives, whether it's through our organization or as a pass-through to the city. But again, this, this particular project will kind of be the maiden project for us. We really want to work closely on the properties that you do receive through condemnation or available city, vacant city lots right now, and so we're, you know, we're very excited about this, very excited about getting it going. You have to own the property before you can order the home, so we're kind of looking to get in order in as quickly as possible. In fact, with this other project, this is a private purchase of a lot that'll be on 7th Street, also a corner position, so we'll have two projects going up next year at about the same time.
Great.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm curious, I know it's early on in the process, but do you know how you're going to identify the, the family or the people that would be eligible for purchase?
There's some guidelines through the Homes for Iowa program, so we'll start with those, and then we'll, you know, we'll discuss others, but we haven't really thought that fully through yet.
Yeah, it's early, I was just curious, thanks.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to the sale of this property? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we will move on to the resolution. So we have to have a resolution in order to sell this and basically accept his purchase offer, again, $10,000 at 504 South Sixth Street.
I'll make the motion that we accept the offer from VITA for 504 South Sixth Street for $10,000 and make the sale.
Okay, great.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy, second by Estee. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Kennes.
Yes.
Tuhill.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So that was approved unanimously. Thanks, Ed, and we really look forward to seeing a house on there and really getting housing started. Okay, next action item is consideration of authorization, authorization of investment accounts. And why don't you go ahead and explain, Doug, where we're at with this?
So every year, we have, we have funds invested in CDs. We cannot, we can only use CDs to, to put our money in, and we put out a bid, a, a bid sheet to all of the local banks, and those are not public. We, we, we receive them, so the first time that anybody has seen them, the, the rates are at council today, it's, it's not an auction, this is, these are the best prices they, they could give us, and these are the results. And I, is that spreadsheet up? Okay. But we will do this every year to give every bank the opportunity to give us their best interest rate and reinvest our funds. And roughly last year, we were making almost $20,000 a month in interest.
Rates have gone down a little bit.
Okay, I was going to ask, is this the highest rate from Pilot Grove Savings Bank? Is that comparable to what we had last year, or I'm kind of curious?
They're a little bit lower than they were last year.
I don't remember what the rate was we had, but it should be a little bit lower.
We were scrambling so much to get it done before this meeting that I was actually wanting to put them side-by-side from last year, and I'll try to get that done for you.
Well, I move that we accept the bid from Pilot Grove Savings Bank, because that's the highest rate.
Second.
There, second, okay. Moved by Estee, second by Flornoy, to accept the Pilot Grove rate of 4.75 for the next year.[1693.58] Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. So along with that, the next resolution is identifying all of our banks and the amount that we can put there at each bank. So, um, Pilot Grove, yeah, Pilot Grove now, you'll see 7 million on there, so, um, so I'd take a motion to approve, uh, these depositories.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Estee?
So this, but the 7 million here for Pilot Grove, does that contemplate that 40, 4 million, 4.5 million we just considered?
No.
No. No.
What, I guess I don't understand.
Pilot Grove has been added to our list here so we can move the CDs from one to another.
But this, this includes that, okay. I'm sorry, that's all it was.
Yeah, I wasn't understanding the question.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah. And then it gives room for interest to be added and all that jazz, so.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Yes, I second.
Oh, yeah. So, uh, Gandy moved and second by Estee. So any other questions? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, great, that was approved unanimously as well to accept all the depositories. Okay, uh, next is the matter of a vacation of an alley. This is on North Fourth Street. Um... Melanie, do you want to say anything about that real quick? Before I open the public hearing?
So this, um, it has been to Planning and Zoning Commission and, uh, what we have happening here is that there was a request to, um, vacate an alley, uh, in exchange for getting a new alley, um, on another side of a lot. Uh, this benefits, uh, the property owner of 403 North Fourth, um, and, um, really only involves, uh, two property owners. The property owner for 403 North Fourth is here. If you have any questions for him, he's the new owner of, uh, that building. And, um, but this, the vacation has been reviewed by the utility companies, um, and is acceptable to them and the city's not really losing anything because we're going to be getting an alley that then provides access to, uh, 403 North Fourth. So that was the reasoning behind, um, Planning and Zoning's, uh, motion to move forward with this. We, we've been calling it a swap, for lack of a better term. That's not a legal term, uh, but that's what we've been calling it. And so there would not be a cost to the people who are receiving the vacation, uh, because they are also the one that it, are dedicating the new alley. Um, and the dedication deed and the quick claim deed then for those two properties, um, are attached just as a review, um, but the actual action tonight would be the resolution.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Would you like to speak to what you plan to do there? And find out if anybody else wants to say anything?
Yeah, so pretty much it's really clear. We just got this property. We are going to start a new restaurant over there and new, you know, to offer to all the community. We have a customer area, patio in the back, but the only access for that area is to the neighbor's property. So that's why we are doing the swap. So we kind of like have access to that area. Also for the trash car, like the garbage truck, just to pick up trash and just to make it easy, uh, we talked with the neighbors and the city and everything has agreed, the utility company has agreed and, yeah, that's, that's pretty much.
Great, good. Okay, good luck. Does anybody else want to speak to this particular vacation of the alley? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the consideration of vacating and transferring of the alley, uh, with this resolution for the dedication deed and the quick claim.
Make the motion that we approve the transfer of this alley or vacating of the alley.
Okay.
Uh, as described in the resolution.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Doug. Moved by Flornoy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Okay. Next is, we're going to talk about the public hearing, uh, or we're, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is on the matter of rezoning of Lincoln School area from an R2, general residence district to a mixed-use district. Council, you will see, uh, hopefully you have seen under here, there were four attachments. Well, actually five. The Planning and Zoning Recommendation Minutes, uh, an objection from neighbors of Lincoln School, another objection from Maggie Squires, and proposed additional parking plan. And, um, so with that, I'm going to open, Melanie, you want to say?
Want me to explain?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. If you, if you want to, yeah, add to that.
I think if you click on it, there might be a map on one of those, Jason? That goes in front? There we go.
Yep, okay.
All right. Um, so the action item in front of you is, um, the request to rezone, uh, the red area from R2, um, to mixed-use. Um, the mixed-use zone was created a couple of years ago, um, and includes the portion of the future land use plan that is defined as the entrepreneurial area, which is gray or purple in the background. So, um, the area, um, it, that we're discussing today is shown as part of the entrepreneurial area, uh, kind of with the exception of Lincoln School because it was shown on the future land use plan as a public building. It was not, um, given a zone other than public, public building. Um, the previous mixture, or the current mixed-use zone goes down to low. It's shown in the red, the red hatch and the area that's being requested, um, is in the darker red. So the addresses that are a part of this request are 506 North Fourth, 508 North Fourth, 401 West Kirkwood, 400 West Stone, 401 West Stone, 706 North Fifth, 410 West Stone, 703 North Fifth, and 405 West Kirkwood. And, um, that was, this was all brought together in order to, um, get the connectivity of that Lincoln area to the existing mixed-use. So we do have, um, sign, or signatures from those addresses that they're wanting to be rezoned from the R2 to the mixed-use.
So I have a question. The ones in the middle, did they, did you go to them as well?
Um, so they went to them and we do have signatures from them, but it was from the tenants, not the owners. And, uh, just, well, I should say the applicant went to those. The Planning and Zoning Department didn't do this. And, uh, we, it was kind of last minute, so we just excluded them at this point. I don't know whether the owners are in favor of it or not at this point, uh, but in order to proceed, uh, we left them out at this point.
With the hopes of adding them later, I assume. Okay. That was the one question I had.
Is there a requirement for it to be contiguous?
Um, not with zoning. I mean, spot zoning is not preferred, but, uh, considering that it is all entrepreneurial area that is, um, the future land use map would say that ultimately someday it would all be mixed-use if you're following your future land use plan. You're not violating anything of your future land use.
Okay. Okay, so with that, um, I'll open the public hearing and, um, my request to anybody who wants to speak to keep it to two to three, three minutes max. And if, if someone has already said your points, then no need to say them again. Um, and I know we do, you know, we do have a couple of documents. I don't know if that person is going to speak, but, um, are you Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and, and you can start the ball rolling.
Okay, thank you. First of all, uh, while I haven't seen Whoville, I've seen the pictures and they're absolutely fantastic. I want to compliment you for doing a fantastic job and it's, sounds wonderful, but I think it's too big for the location. And, uh, I, and talking about, uh, first thing I want to mention is ordinance 1199, permitted uses, uh, well, it lists business uses. It's almost like Whoville would be a tourist destination and I've heard it described as that. And, uh, uh, it's not, I, I sent an email late this afternoon that I got, um, the request for proposals that the Fairfield Community School District sent out. And in it, the Huffman's talk about what they want to do. And they talk about not just Whoville, but, uh, conference and meeting rooms gathering, but also they talk about tourism as, about this location as tourism. And, uh, I, that would really change the neighborhood. Are the, is my document able to pull up? I have a map. I attached a map. Yeah, it's on the last page of this. Oh, that's upside down. Well, north, okay. There are several, uh, people bought houses in this neighborhood with the understanding that it was a school or it had been a school forever. Everybody I've talked to has said it's always been a school. When you look at it, there's a lot of places where people can't park. Now, I know their plans to take the green space and turn it into parking, but we're only talking about, what was it, 162 parking spaces? And the, uh, what was it, they're talking about, they got 1,000 a night. When I've talked to Joe Hurd, the street superintendent, he said that people would have to park on-site or off-site someplace. They can't park on West Merrill, it's strictly, uh, strictly residential parking. Orchard Place is a former alley that's on the far left side. West Stone doesn't have on-street parking and North, North Fourth doesn't have on-street parking. Now, it's, they, they did a fantastic job over on Burling, so much that they ran out of parking space. And they don't charge tickets, so they aren't going to know how many people come. What if they get 2,000 people a night and how many cars are that? So, uh, okay, how much, so on, uh, can you go back to the first page of the, of the document? Okay, five points. How large will it be? Now, once again, people have bought, that, bought their houses in this neighborhood. They were looking, um, they're expecting it to be quiet. They, they've, you can think of, uh, sound, what's the sound going to be with all these cars in and out in limited, there's not that many places. Now, there are plans to have new entrances. I'm surprised it's not, there, the, uh, the parking diagram was included.
It's attached.
Okay, it's attached.
So hopefully council's already seen it.
But there are new entrances, uh, entrances of West Merrill, which would be right in front of some people's houses, a new entrance on, uh, North Fourth and a new entrance on, uh, Stone, West Stone. And Stone's kind of weird because if you, if you're going, uh, let's say toward everybody's, it doesn't go right across. It, it kind of wiggles, so it could be confusing for people that aren't familiar with the area. So how are people going to get in and out? People who aren't familiar with the area, it's going to be dark. And where will people park? And how much bigger is it going to get? So my compliments for what they've done, but I think it's too big for the spot.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, anyone else?
Any, any questions?
I don't think so. Anyone else? If you have something to add to what he said? Yeah, please don't just repeat what he said. That's what, that's what I'm asking. And tell, tell us your name and, uh...
Hi, I'm Mary Jean Lavender. We're new here. We moved, um, about three and a half years ago. I picked that house because it was tucked out of the way and I laughed at my friends because, where I've been in a busy town in Southern California, we have seven cars on a good day going past our neighborhood. That's why I bought the place. If I'd known that they were going to build Disney World next to it, I would have moved my family down to Anaheim. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my house is right next to where the parking lot will be. Literally, you know, six feet from my house will be cars coming in and out. It's a very popular program. I understand 7,000 people came to the Christmas one. Again, it's a quiet neighborhood. We have kids, we have pets. I'm concerned about having cars constantly next to my house and not being able to open my shades. We just love our neighborhood. We want it to remain quiet and we don't want to live next to a big parking lot and lose all that green space.
Okay, great, thank you. Do the Huffman's want to speak to your plans there and tell us if the numbers that they're repeating are correct from last year? Is it always going to be Whoville and you're going to?
Well...
You know, or if you can expound so they, everyone understands.
We're going to switch it up a little bit, but first of all, I want to say this isn't something that goes on every night of the week. This is eight nights for three hours for kids to see Santa Claus, for kids to see The Grinch. This year, kids are going to get to experience Harry Potter. And I do this because I'm very passionate about it and the numbers they do talk about are true. We did see over 7,000 people. We brought in, I don't know how much money to the restaurants, the hotels. It's an economy thing as well to help this town. Kids, adults, all of them, if we had something positive versus negative, think what better place this world could be. Like I said, it's not every night. I do plan to do other things in there. I do meet all the criteria in your ordinance that was passed. On one end of the building, I'm going to put a restaurant in, a good steakhouse, that's what's needed. I've got a lot of offices for rent. I've had people already come up to me wanting to rent space for offices. Yes, I've talked about weddings, small weddings, if anybody's walked through the, the Lincoln Elementary. Not a real big gymnasium, so it's going to be a small wedding. Weddings are held in the afternoons on Saturday unless you're in Vegas. That's when it's at night. I don't anticipate a lot of noise at all going on here. This is mainly, mainly for kids to do things, everything from, yes, Santa Claus and The Grinch to pumpkin carving, um, different kinds of things, maybe craft shows, maybe, you know, the list goes on and on of what we could do as a community to involve everyone. And based on that, it was better than letting that school just deteriorate because that's all it was doing. The, putting the heating and air back in cost me $230,000 plus buying the property, plus hooking the water back up because everything froze and broke. I've put my heart and soul into this because I believe in it. I'm not trying to ruin anybody's peace and quiet. I'm 56 years old. I want peace and quiet as well. We'll probably be out of there and any evening event latest, probably 10 o'clock. And like I said, eight times a year. And the rest of the time, we'll use it for daytime things, for things that I've mentioned. And it does nothing but, um, promote Fairfield as a whole. And he spoke about tourist things. Sure, isn't that what we want as a community? Don't we want people to come here, see what we have and partake in it and make, make it a community? I mean, I, I thought that's what it was about. But anyway, I'll let my husband do, I do the parking. I'm not sure, did everybody get the CAD of that?
I think so.
So as far as the parking goes, at J.C. Huffman, we can hold approximately 25 to 26.
You want to get closer to the mic? Sorry.
Um, at J.C. Huffman, we can hold approximately 20 to 25 cars, you know, between, up to 26. RPM, which is our neighbor right next door to us, they can hold approximately 30 vehicles, okay? Yes, last year, we were very surprised at the amount of people that came in and turned out and yes, they were parking down West Burlington Avenue. But, you know, with RPM's parking and our parking, we're about 50-some people. With the current parking that we have now at Lincoln Center, there is, it will hold 62 cars, okay? We are planning on expanding that, but on an average, with people in and out of there, the most we're going to see, you know, in the beginning of the event will be the most cars it's going to be. Their people are going to taper off as they're leaving, you know? So it, it's going to be kind of a... So it's going to be kind of an influx at the beginning, but it's going to taper off. As far as the current entrances and exits, there is three on Merrill Street that are current, okay? The only one that we had talked about would be coming off Fourth Street. All other entrances and exits are currently there, going to the concrete. You know, even in the picture that he has on his drawing, shows the current path to concrete.
So will you have, is it as many as 1,000 people in the evening? Is that correct?
That is kind of a maximum, you know, and at 1,000 people, let's say you've got four people coming in per car. There may be more, there may be less, but on an average of four people per car, that's 250 cars, okay? So what we're planning on doing...
Is that the average number of people in a car when they come to an event like this in the evening?
Typically, usually you've got either both grandparents and a couple, three grandkids, or, you know, parents with kids. But, you know, on average, there's two parents, there's always two parents, and there's at least two to three kids along with them, okay? So yes, it's kind of an average, you know? Sometimes they, the parents bring one child, sometimes they bring three.
So would that be, if there's 1,000 people typically in the evening, four people per vehicle, that would be 250 vehicles, is that right?
Correct. But like I say, it's kind of a, you know, some people come later, some people come earlier. So it's kind of a give and take throughout the evening, okay?
Paul, I was going to say, real quick, Paul, if you went worst-case scenario, 7,000 people at eight nights, that's just under 900 a night. If you had only three people in a car at 166 spaces, it'd be 448 cars in the evening for the entire night. That's less than one turnover in the parking lot. So unless everybody came at the beginning and stayed till the very end, they wouldn't run out of parking spaces.
Right. That's kind of what I was getting at. It's a give and take throughout the evening. It's just, you know, the flow just keeps going. We have also talked to the school. The school is willing to bus people in from the middle school parking lot. If we advertised it as an alternative parking, they are willing to bus people in. All we have to do is pay the diesel. And they've also talked about the high school parking lot. But they are willing to donate buses. All we have to do is pay the fuel and possibly the drivers. But it is an alternative to get people in and out. But in my opinion, I feel that we're going to have plenty of parking here, that we shouldn't need that. What else?
Okay.
Troy that owns the Solar Place, he said that we can also use his parking.
Right, I was going to ask, because there's manufacturing like a block away, so you know...
Right, and they said that they are more than willing to let us use it. He came in and he said, you know, I know you're going to have plenty of vehicles. You're more than welcome to use any spaces that we have around our buildings to be able to park people.
What would you anticipate to be hours for the restaurant you're planning?
I haven't anticipated that far, to be quite honest with you. Simply because I'm anticipating heat being put in right now.
Right, right. You're talking, you're mentioning a steakhouse, correct?
Yeah, but it's not going to be a massive one at all, because I'm not going to work that much. I already have three jobs, so...
Oh, you, it'd be your restaurant?
Yes. That's really, really been kind of a passion of mine as well. Because people come together because they like to eat and they enjoy each other's company. So it'd be like a specialty thing. It's not going to be like a Texas Roadhouse or anything. It's just going to be, you know...
It's like most other...
Smaller restaurants.
Smaller restaurants.
I mean, the classrooms are roughly, those classrooms are roughly 1,000 square feet apiece, so it's not going to be huge at all.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Campbell, you want to say something additional? Please come to the microphone. Otherwise, it doesn't get recorded well and people can't hear if they're listening.
Since it's right next to the neighborhood of east of North Fourth Street, there's also going to be pedestrian traffic. So there will be, they will need to be someone making sure that people can cross the street. I just mentioned that. So it's going to be a lot more pedestrian traffic than it would be out on Burlington. Thank you.
And I thought I read something about streetlights, is that, did I read something about that?
The flashing light at Merrill and...
Yes, yeah.
We are planning on putting, we are planning on putting lights on all the corners of the buildings to be able to illuminate that area as much as we possibly can. You know, and like you was suggesting, you know, as far as the pedestrians and stuff like that, crossing 34 out there, Business 34, in front of our business, we had people out there trying to control the traffic as much as we possibly could to allow people to go back and forth. The traffic on Fourth Street and Stone Street is going to be considerably less than it would be on Highway 34.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. And that lighting that you're talking about will be, will it be on a timer so that, like at 10 o'clock, it dims? Is that what you're planning?
Whenever, whenever we're not there, the parking lot lighting will not be on.
Gotcha.
Okay, so whenever, like I say, after the event, the last car leaves, lighting goes off.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if you could do, sorry. I was just going to say, I wonder if you could do a stop sign that has the red flashing light, like the schools do, that turns when it's not in use?
Especially at night.
And it's really easy to see.
Come to the microphone, please, and give us your name.
My name is William Tipping. I own the property of 407 West Kirkwood, right adjacent to the 405. I had two questions. One, why do you need all these little places if the whole thing is going to be at the elementary school? What's the purpose of all these other smaller houses being included?
Melanie, do you want to answer that question?
So these, these people elected to be rezoned. They feel that it's got a benefit to their property. The mixed use is part of the entrepreneurial district because it is considered economic development as it was created in order to provide growth, to revitalize the area. I think that's the word I was trying to find. You know, some of the things that were thought of when the mixed use was created was, you know, someone wants to run, you know, a maintenance shop out of their garage, or they want to do a business that's more than one room out of their house. Home occupation permits are only allowed with one room out of their house. So their business has gotten a little bit bigger, or it's a business that typically doesn't allow for home occupation. So those people felt that, maybe they're not planning on doing a business, but they felt that this rezone was what they wanted for their property because it allowed them more options.
And we had to notify all those people in that area.
Yeah, they, I mean, like I said, those, the ones that were in that red area, we have signatures from those property owners that said they were willing to rezone.
Okay, great, thank you.
Melanie, when you're, since you're up here, you said it's currently zoned as a public-use building, correct?
It's not zoned. That's what the future...
Designated?
That's what it's designated on the future land use map. So the future land use map is our guidance for rezone.
So what are examples of public-use buildings?
So all, on our future land use map, all city, county, and school buildings were designated as public-use buildings.
So as it's designated now, it could be, you know, like, for example, like a post office or a police station, or, you know, like, are those public-use buildings?
I do know, I do know the police station is, I would have to double-check on the post office. So that's what it is on the, on the future land use plan. What it is as far as existing zoning is, it's existing zoning is R2.
R2, right.
And public buildings are allowed in any zone. So we could put a post office in an industrial zone if we wanted to. Actually, there is a post office. The annex is in the industrial zone.
Right.
So they're allowed. And then I think that's probably why the future land use people kind of didn't classify them as anything, because they can be put in any zone.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing, go ahead.
While you're here?
Yeah, I have something I'd like to say though, so go, you go first.
When was Lincoln School last used as a school?
13 years ago.
So it's been...
Just so that it gets...
It was a school 13 years ago. It did have Indian Hills Community Center in there.
For...
Until, until, like, 2020, and then it's set down.
But they closed as an, they closed as an actual elementary school before that, didn't they? Yeah, well before that. I think I was still at it. Yeah.
Before I was in Fairfield full-time is when it closed, actually.
They had manpower training and they had partnership between the school, industrial arts, and Indian Hills New Careers. And that went on for six or seven years. So it's, it's had school uses that weren't necessarily the school district uses.
Right, right. Yeah, but it was, it's been owned by the school the whole time.
So were you going to make another point?
Yeah, regarding the parking lot and where the entrances are and the site design, so none of that has been approved by myself and Joe Heard. It's not that I disapprove of it, but, you know, that's not really what's on the table here. So personally, I would not like to see another entrance off of Fourth Street. I would rather, but, so just let me know that those details are not being presented to you as a final solution. Additional parking is great, but since that's not what's in front of you, those details have not been finalized.
Okay.
We're just talking about zoning.
Yes, yeah.
And I think you had another question.
My house is on the northern part of North Fifth that ends at the school. And that, there are a lot of people who park on the street there. What happens to them when they come home and there's no parking for them? They can't park near their house. And I'm concerned, as Mr. Campbell, that it's too big for the residential area. And this creep of, from the entrepreneurial, near the railroad, up through a residential area, we need to keep our residential area. We have, as far as I heard from a number of realtors, there's a dearth of residential properties. We have more commercial room, as I understand, for them than we do residential. So I'm, I am concerned about this deterioration of residential area. I don't think Fairfield can afford it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Any additional thoughts? Yes, if you'll come to the microphone and let us, give us your name, please.
I'm Sidney Gibson, and I live like a block away, two blocks. Is that about right?
Are you on Orchard?
Yes, Orchard. And it sounds, I can't express it anything else but from a homeowner. You can imagine what it would be like to have that many new people in the area coming through. And they, not only that, it's just, it is, we would like to keep it residential. There must be some other way to use that piece of property. There is no guarantee that we can see that what they've said they are going to do, they're going to stop at that. I mean, there's nothing to stop them if you zone it that way. What was the other thing? To do that to a residential area just makes no sense to me. And we would like to, everybody I've talked to in the area, and I've talked to most of them, they're not at all happy about it. Because it's just, it's too much. We like to get our sleep at night. We don't want, noise hasn't even been mentioned. And we don't know at what point that's enough, you know? That, we haven't seen any of their plans. Tonight's the first time I've seen their plans, and it's not definite, you know, what they're planning to do. What would the council do if they keep growing and growing and growing? What recourse do we have at that point? I would like to know that, too, okay?
Well, basically, you know, based on what Teresa and Jim said, you know, this isn't a two or three in-the-morning event. This is done by, you know, 10 o'clock. So just keep that in mind.
And, but, and the other question that I'd have then is how many, they say it's only for three nights. Is it for three nights?
There's eight nights.
Eight nights? Eight nights, and will it stop at that? I mean, it will only be in December. Are they going to have something else then for Halloween? Are they going to have something else for 4th of July? You see what I'm saying? It just, there's no boundaries here that we can see. I mean, three nights, three days, we could deal with that probably. We wouldn't like it. But there's, it's just too wide open and it's too much. You know, that's my opinion of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you.
Imagine that your home is six feet from the parking lot, and you have light pollution, and you have traffic pollution, you have sound pollution. I plead with you to think about our neighborhood. And would you like to live right next door to that? You know?
Thank you. Phil?
Well, my name's Philip Kern, and at the risk of getting in a lot of, getting in a lot of trouble, I happen to have known the Huffman's for a long time. I know they're good people. I know they do nice things for the community. I know there's going to be somebody in there. And I'd sure as hell rather have J.C. Huffman and his wife in there than somebody that's going to do something second-class and doesn't care about the community itself. So that's, and I live right across the street, and I've lived there for 15 years. So I would recommend that we work together, they're going, they put money into it, they bought the building, it's zoned. We should work with them and we should work with the neighbors as much as possible to see that the concerns of when the events are being held, this is, from what I understand, not every night, this is whatever it is. And I was told that it was going to be not like the movie in Atoma, but something that was...
Did you live in your house when the school was there?
Absolutely.
How much activity did you, was the school every day?
Never bothered us. We had, you know, I would, there was not like horns honking. And all I can say is that I have a lot of respect for the Huffman's. I know a lot of the people here, and I sure as heck wouldn't like to be living where my friends, the Terribl's, live. That used to be our home. Yeah, and so, you know, but how can we balance this? So let's see what we can do, but let's help make this something we can all be proud of for Fairfield. Because I think the people that live close to, like, some of the places close to the courthouse, there are private homes there. And, you know, I think it can be done. I hope it can be done. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. Was there one other person? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deborah Peterson. I live in Peeken, and I'm Mrs. Claus. Just want to say, they're concerned about noise and that in the level. This is such a small event that it's not like a large city where it's going to be held every night. We're nine nights, eight nights. I've been outside when people are leaving. It's not going to bother the neighbors. So we must keep that in mind. We want to work. We had six surrounding states from people that have come to Fairfield, never heard of Fairfield before. I was a real estate agent in Colorado for quite many years, and this is an asset to this town. It's going to bring people to the town that didn't even know Fairfield was even on the map. So I think everybody should consider that. I mean, as far as parking, we've talked to the Huffman's, we've helped the Huffman's. We'll figure out parking. I mean, we don't want people, people probably think we're going to park in their yards and interrupt them. We have no intentions of that. I mean, we, we'll have plenty of parking because it is spread out. So I am repeating some of the things some people said, but this is a good use on this property, and it's going to be, it's going to be good for the neighbors. It's going to, it's going to bring the values up of the neighborhood. So that's all I really want to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Your will. Is there anyone else?
Hi. My name's Maggie Squires, as you know, Connie. And I am just speaking on behalf of my mother, who lives at 703 North Fourth Street. She's extremely elderly, and, you know, I agree about the Huffman's. They're absolutely wonderful people. I don't think their intentions, that's not, you know, up for debate. I think that it's more a practical concern. We're right across, and, and I'm concerned about the congestion, how we're going to get in and out of our driveways, you know? What if there's a medical emergency with somebody that, like my mom, who's almost 100 years old? Or, you know, something like that. I think, I think, you know, it's not in question how we feel about the Huffman's and their wonderful plans. It's more just a practical scenario of, you know, it's, it's a residential neighborhood. We are concerned about noise, of course. And, and I think the other thing that, that is a little concerning is if the Huffman's ever decide to sell, what that means for us. You know, I think most of the neighborhood is just concerned, you know, has practical concerns about it. The congestion on Fourth Street, you know, the congestion on the side streets. I think that, along with the noise and bright light and all of that, I think is the main concern from people. But it's, you know, the Huffman's and their integrity are not in question here at all.
Great.
Yeah, and I had promised my mom, who couldn't be here, that I would speak on her behalf, and I had written a letter, and Melanie had provided it to all of you. It actually wasn't for me. It was really for my, from my mom.
Great.
Dolores. And she's been there for over 40 years, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to give that...
Thank you, Maggie. Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to remind everyone that this is the first reading of this ordinance, consideration of rezoning Lincoln School area from R2 General Residence District to Mixed Use District. So this does have to go through three readings. So this will just be the first reading and the first vote.
Can you explain more what that means to go from the first reading to the second?
So tonight will be the first reading, and providing it passes, it will go to the next council meeting and be again on that agenda.
Will there be a public hearing?
We'll do the same process, public hearing for additional comments. And then again, the following meeting in November. So again, there'll be three opportunities for public hearings and to hear comments, for the council to hear comments. And maybe any details, additional details about parking or lighting that the Huffman's might want to bring. So...
Can I ask Melanie a question?
Yes.
Melanie, could you detail for us a little bit more about what the city, and by city, I mean you specifically have to approve as far as, you know, what entrances and exits and how much parking and what all they can do on the exterior of the property?
Um, so, okay, so on entrances, we, I base that off of statewide urban design standards, SUDOS. And with, with Fourth Street being a very highly-traveled road, we don't want a lot of entrances in between intersections. So SUDOS puts driveways at a certain distance from intersections to prevent conflict points and, and things like that. So between the, the offset of stone and then the amount of daily traffic that is on Fourth Street, I would have to run the calculations, but SUDOS probably would not recommend putting anything beyond the residential driveways that we have to provide people. Would not recommend putting a parking lot driveway there. SUDOS probably wouldn't even want residential driveways, but we have to allow people access to their property. And, and same with stone, you know, if there were anything more. And so that is the process that I use for all new driveways. We limit residential properties to one driveway. Commercial properties have multiple driveways. And if there are any concerns with traffic flow or maneuvering or, you know, safety concerns, if it's a decision that I don't feel like I can make or that the property owner doesn't like the decision that I make, then we bring it to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee. But again, I base most of that off of design standards from the state level. Your other questions were on the parking lot design. And, okay, so we do, our code does require a certain number of parking spaces, depending on the use of the building. With this being a mixed-use building, there's probably about 400 different ways that we could calculate that. And so what we would do is probably, I mean, we can't put any more parking spaces than what there is property. I think probably the first thing to do would be get an occupancy load for the building and go from there. But, and so the fire department would calculate that based off of the use of the building. So things like doctors' offices require, you know, a parking space for each professional and then a, I think like one and a half for a patient, assuming, you know, that one waits. And our parking code is very antiquated. It assumes that people use cars way more than what Fairfield uses cars. But for a large event, again, we may base it off of something different than what our code does. So I try and look at those based off of the event, and if I can fit it within the code and say, you know, yep, it's very cut and dry and it meets our code exactly, I feel comfortable with it. The person who owns it feels comfortable with it, then we're good. If it does not fit within the code book, again, we'll take it to Public Safety and/or the Board of Adjustment to review that, so.
Okay. Would we be able to have an occupancy figure?
Yeah.
By next meeting?
Um, I did talk with Brett about that. He's watching, so I'm just hoping he texts me while I'm up here. So, yep, I can get that done. But, yeah, so we'll, I'll see what he can do, but I did mention to trying to get that done.
Yeah, I think that's a good piece of information for the council to have. I think a good piece of information for the Huffman staff. Be nice to have that sooner than later.
All that is to say, though, too, right? Like, there are many different steps before, you know, there's, you know, it's not, we're just talking about the zoning issue right now.
Right.
And there would be other procedures for, you know, additional parking maybe or, you know, other entrances.
Exactly.
Okay. And it's only a block away from, I mean, that neighborhood's only a block away from manufacturing, right? An industrial?
Um, yes, it is a block away from Ideal. And it is the, there is current zoning of industrial zoning a block away, yes. Ideal is zoned, Ideal Energy is zoned industrial use.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just have one more question.
No, go for it.
Uh, Orchard?
Mm-hmm.
The, which is, it is very small.
Yes.
Because it was an alley, right?
Um, it is only, it is platted at 16 and a half feet.
Is there any way to control that?
Don't approve plats that don't have big enough streets.
Right? Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's too late for that. I mean, the houses are already built up to it, but it's...
We can blame the people that, that started that a while ago, but anyway.
Yeah, so when I get really angry and I'm like, I'm putting my foot down, I don't want this plat approved because the street is too narrow, I have reasons.
Yeah. So, you know, I just, I just wondered, on event night, is there a way to control that street? Because, I mean, obviously, if this passes, it doesn't sound like a good idea to have cars going both ways. I don't envision cars going down on that block, but you never know.
So...
So that's just a question that I thought of.
Um, even though the event last year was outside of the city limits, the street department did work with Teresa because it was, there was a safety concern to our citizens because it's, you know, not very well lit out there and people were crossing the highway. So we did put up some flashers or gave her some barricades to put up that had flashers to help draw people's attention, because there were safety concerns that were coming into the law center as the numbers were increasing, as, as word got out about it. So it would be something that whether it is through the police department or the streets department or all of the above, that we would talk to her. Just like any other large event, whether it is on the square or it's on private property, you know, they have safety protocols and briefing. I mean, if they feel like there's a safety concern at a large event at a bar or something like that, they have to hire extra security. And those are things that their private property and their private property insurance encourages them to do and have them discuss with the city. Paul's eyebrows went up. I'm not saying that this is like an equivalent to a bar, but it is like eight something at night, and that's the best equivalent I could come up with, or like example I could come up with, but I'm not trying to say it's an equivalent, but...
When you said large events and extra security, it may be a concern. Here's my question, though. Who was responsible for the maintenance of the building, the property, before the Huffman's purchased it?
The school system.
Do you know what the maintenance cost was roughly?
No. No, I don't.
I don't think, they weren't putting any money into it, I don't think, or very little.
Can you, I don't want to keep dragging this out, but if, if we don't rezone it as mixed use, it stays R2?
Yeah.
The only options for the building would be apartments?
Wouldn't even be that.
Wouldn't be that.
Because R2 only allows duplex or more.
So it'd have to be a duplex? So it would sit vacant and dilapidate, probably?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Tom, it could be other things. It was a public building.
Yeah, it could be a public building.
It was used for about 12 months as a temporary courthouse. They were remodeling in the courthouse, and I went to court over there every week for the city. There also was discussion about things like probationers meeting in the rooms over there as conference rooms and so forth. The court services program kind of steered away from that. I don't think they wanted it to become a place in that area.
Well, it sat empty for a few years, so they didn't, they didn't have any interest in it, you know?
Right. I mean, the only reason it could be a public building is because public buildings are allowed in any zone.
Right.
But to be any residential use, it would still have to come in front of the Board of Adjustment because only a duplex or more would be allowed. So if this was going to be used as, if, if a different person got the bid from the school and was going to turn it into an apartment building, we would still be having a conversation about a large number of cars and people in and out, because it's a big enough building. So...
Well, there wouldn't, there wouldn't have to be 162 cars there if it was zoned as, as residential. This is just something that they're offering to do. It's not, so...
Okay, so any other, go, let's move on to the ordinance and a vote on the first reading. If council, if you're done with questions, or I guess, you know, is there a motion to move this?
Brett did, Brett didn't say he could get it done with a smiley face, he must have.
Okay, good.
I move it. I move that we, we move the ordinance to the second reading.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Estes and a second by Hamm to move this from the first to the second reading. And again, you'll have an opportunity, a public hearing at that time, and we will have additional information at that time.
When will that be?
The next council meeting.
28th.
October 28th.
October 28th. Okay? So any discussion, council? Okay, please call the roll.
Estes?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yeah, I favor, I just want to make the point, I do favor economic development. I would like to see from the Huffman's at our next meeting, if they have a, have a rendering, so we could see, I'm trying to picture in my mind what those look like, if I could see what your proposal would, what it would be with the, the parking built in and maybe a typical night, the kind of car, the kind of vehicle population you might have. It'd be nice to see that, like a better envision whether or not I think there'd be a benefit to this particular community. But for now, I think it makes sense to move it to the second reading, so I'm moving, yes.
But wouldn't that be kind of misleading, because we really don't know, like, what can be done? There are so many different steps that have to happen before that.
Well, I think they have a vision. They have a vision, otherwise they wouldn't...
Which we have a copy of.
That's a two-dimensional drawing. I'm talking about a rendering. If they've invested quite a bit of money into the property, which I believe they have, they stated that, I don't know why, it would, it makes sense to me to invest a little bit more to make something that the community can look at and have a vision, have, they can see what's proposed, and maybe the concerns the community have would be lessened.
Okay, let's, let's finish the vote.
Flornoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, it's moving to the second reading. Again, the next meeting will be October 28th. Is that what you said?
Yes.
You don't have that date in front of me. Okay, great. The next me, our next ordinance is number 1254. This is the second reading. This is consideration of amendment to fees. If you recall, this is for fees for the brush pile. $1,250 for a small load, or like a half a pickup, and $25 for a large or a full pickup load. Again, this is the second reading.
So make the motion, move ordinance 1254 from the second to the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by To Hill. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was approved unanimously. Ordinance 1252, consideration of amendment related to definitions of vehicles and pedestrians. This is the third and final reading. And I was just going to read, so it was really clear. Just a couple of things. This is about definitions, again, of pedestrians and their conveyances. Any human-powered device by which a pedestrian may move other than by walking or by which a pedestrian may move another person, including but not limited to a wheelchair, stroller, skateboard, scooter, or other similar device. This does not include a bicycle. So...
Make the motion that we adopt ordinance 1252.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by To Hill. Any discussion? Okay, this is the third and final reading. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Sorry. To Hill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Great. That was passed unanimously. And then last is ordinance 1253, the third and final reading, consideration of amendment to Chapter 20, related to where dog kennels can be placed in the city, and that is limited to our limited manufacturing M1 and business district B2.
Make the motion, we adopt ordinance 1253.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I have one board appointment to the Natty Committee. This was requested by Ron Blair for Mr. Dan Sears, and he's got his bio there. He is a USDA NRCS easement specialist, so it looks like he has some good cred to be on this committee, and would ask you to approve Mr. Dan Sears, to replace Mark Smith, by the way. Mark's term is up.
Make the motion that we point Dan Sears to the Natty Committee.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Estes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you very much. Going to remind, if you have not turned in the questionnaire that Doug sent you, our city administrator about a week and a half ago, please get that in as soon as possible. We're preparing, you know, kind of rounding up that information for our work session
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you very much. Going to remind, if you have not turned in the questionnaire that Doug sent you, our city administrator about a week and a half ago, please get that in as soon as possible. We're preparing, you know, kind of rounding up that information for our work session on October 26th. And I have, sorry, I didn't get this printed up yet, because I want to put some timeframes. But I'll quickly kind of go through some of our agenda items that Doug and I have talked about. If you have anything else, you can add it to, to, you know, let me know. We'll quickly go through our emergency procedures, like we did last year. Want to talk about council procedures, study sessions, committee meetings, and also how to move forward more efficiently with codifications. So those are kind of all under the council procedures. I'm going to bring to you a couple Roberts Rules training, and these will just be handouts for you to, you know, read and understand, and we'll try to be more efficient in a couple of those areas at our meetings. Comp plan review, contract and lease agreements. I know Doug is working and looking at the waste management one. That comes up next year, the five-year review, I believe it is. There's some new sidewalk legislation that John's going to talk about, and by the way, I left you a copy of what was in the Cityscapes. You may have already seen it, but I left you a copy just in case. We're going to talk about attorney succession planning, might be using different attorneys for different specialties, which we, which John has done before anyway, but we're going to talk about that a little bit more. And again, strategic planning, you know, kind of where we've been, what are the things that we still need to focus on from last year that we said we were going to do this year, code enforcement, and then, you know, really looking at next year, what we want our priorities to be. So if you've got anything else, let me know. But that's what it looks like so far, and I'm going to put some timeframes to that, and, you know, so we'll get your agenda here soon. Okay, city attorney report. You got anything, John?
A couple things. I'm glad you're mentioning the workshop and so forth. I'm going to bring you a little outline of all the different possible ways that we do code enforcement, all the way through to condemnation, from the simplest misdemeanor citation, like a traffic ticket. So, and Weston's got some ideas on something we might want to look at that simplifies some of the stuff we do with nuisances, down to handling it like a traffic ticket. So, that being said, at the work session, I would also expect, we may be, you hand out this Spitzberger ruling from the Supreme Court. We had our city engineer years ago come up with two or three different ways that people dealt with their sidewalks. Bring your ideas on that this time, as far as what you think people liked about that experience 12 or 14 years ago, because we did it partly with the city using contractors, partly with people just privately contracting, and partly with sort of a cooperative thing where the city inspected what neighborhood people did, either with a private contractor or just on their own. And we got quite a few sidewalks improved. We still have a few claims every year that come out of a sidewalk that buckled or something like that. But I think this will be something good to talk about at the time. And I don't want to talk it over tonight.
Yeah.
Another thing that has come up, and we had Weston here earlier for our Ways and Means Committee, talking about 657A as a compliance procedure. I plan on spending a little bit of time talking about that at our work session, and I believe he'll be there. And we talked about it with Ways and Means, as far as ways to deal with some of the costs of that. Another thing that came up, though, and Ed Malloy mentioned it to you tonight, is one of the initiatives that Grow Iowa Fairfield Economic Development Association hopes to kick off, is a housing trust fund with, he says he has some backers for that already. And the housing trust fund, where it's come up in about the last two months, is there have been a couple of court instances where people showed up and contended that the city hasn't been doing what it could with funds that existed to help people fix their nuisances. That's misinformation is the only way to characterize it, and misunderstandings of what existed for a while historically. County Board of Supervisors had the opportunity to avail itself of state funds to be used for the Housing Improvement Trust Fund, and they actually did that. When it came up in the court, Weston and I went down and talked to the auditor's office. We determined that the Board of Supervisors administered that. It was their option first, and then it could have been ours. But if it's run the way Ed Malloy and the Development Association Group anticipate, it'll be a successful project. The project run by the Board of Supervisors loaned out to different people for their home improvement needs, up to $12,000 dozens and dozens of times until they used up their fund. And the reaction of the people in the auditor's office was that, yeah, that was a good thing, it just, the state didn't continue to fund it, so the board didn't, you know, take it on as its own funding activity. They didn't think that it would be that popular, that there would be a levy locally without state funds involved. But we're in a position right now with Grob, FIDA, and Ed Malloy looking at it, where he indicates he's got some private backing that might include a couple of companies here in town that want to see that kind of availability to improve housing, and may, by improving it, making housing more available, that does take advantage of this fund. The whole idea of the fund is that you continue to live in the house you fix up, and if you live there long enough and you did a good job with it, it's a forgivable loan. And that's worked that way in the surrounding small towns. It's worked that way, using the Board of Supervisor system in the past. Lee Demmett thought it would really be worth looking at again. Here we are, we're looking at it. So, hopefully, I believe Ed was planning on being at the work session.
Yes, and just to be clear, under the strategic planning, we got, there's going to be a housing component there.
Right.
So, you know, Ed's still listening, since he's not here right now. We, I do plan for a section that we can talk about this trust bond and a couple other things.
Yeah, so my hope is, and it will benefit us as far as our city perspective in the community, and the community's view of how we're handling things like nuisance housing and so forth, that we have looked into it, that we do have the possibility of something like that being available and being used real soon.
Okay.
So, that's about all I'll say about that for now.
Great, thank you. Committee and board reports, water and sewer utilities?
Yeah, we had a short meeting on September 30th. 201 North D Street had a leak going on for months that went unnoticed, and then the pipe burst. And once that happened, the owner got the whole thing repaired, and they had a dramatic and sizable bill that they're asking for reduction on. The city looked into it, found that the water did not go into the sewer system, so most of what we charged is not, is not an expense that the city incurred. So the Water and Sewer Committee is recommending to council that we reduce, or that we
Abate.
Abate the sewer bill by $3,728.82 for 201 North D Street.
Okay, so I take it that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Second by Tohill. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Rowe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously, again, to create an urban renewal area and create a TIF of the new housing developments on the south part of town. Okay, anything else?
Oh, yeah, we had a lot more.
Yes, I'm like, oh, no, wait a minute, yeah, you said you had five things, so we're not there yet.
The second one was, Ed already discussed it tonight, it was the lots for the prison, the PIH, the prison industry housing through FIDA, specifically the lot on South Sixth, which he already discussed, and we've already talked about, so I will skip that. The third one is an annual expenditure for sewer easement. For quite some time, we've had a property that we set up a sewer easement with years ago, and we set it up into two different areas, the north side of the property and the south side of the property. It's a farm. And we had sewer running through it, and this was before we had even finished step two. And there were manholes that were blowing, some water gushing out. They, there were quite a few manholes in the property that they had to maintain around, and we agreed to pay them $1,000 a year for each, $1,000 a year for each contract, as long as the owner or any family member of the owner owned the property. Since then, since phase two, the north side of the property no longer has any manholes on it. The south side still has, I believe, two manholes on it, which have not blown in quite a while. And when phase three is finished in a few months, it will even be less pressure through the area.
Are they farming around it?
No, they're in the fence line.
Okay.
So, they're not, they're not in the field area, they're in the fence line.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, whether or not we continue with this is what we're discussing. My feeling originally was, we at least get out of the north part of the property. But we also, once we finish phase three, we might be in a little better position to possibly excuse ourselves from both contracts. And whether we want to make an agreement or a deal with them, you know, is yet to be seen. So, we're actually going to come now without any recommendation, but I just wanted to kind of fill you in on what's, what's going on with it. So, unless anybody has any strong opinion, one way or the other, I think we're going to wait until we finish with, with step three to, to better our position in that area. The fourth one on our agenda was the Walton Bridge, Walton Bridge Replacement Funding. Thank you. The estimated cost, I believe it's putting six 36-inch culverts under the current bridge, under the, where the current bridge stands, and constructing a new one over it. We'd have to drain at least the north part of the lake for the construction to occur. Estimated, engineer's estimate for it is $147,000 with a $15,000 contingency. We looked at various sources of funding, and I think we're going to use three different ones. We decided to break it up into $50,000 each out of two funds, and the remaining balance out of a third fund. So, the first one would be out of the lost or local option sales tax, would be $50,000. That would bring our estimated available funds ending at fiscal '25 to $378,685, if we took $50,000 out of that. The second one would be out of the general fund. If we took $50,000 out of that, that would bring our remaining balance down to $1,734,177. And then the third one would be out of the water fund. And with that amount, yet to be seen. I don't know, they, they have about 2.8 in there right now, but they have an EDR project coming up, and a generator still, still to pay for. So, I guess I make a motion that we, we move ahead for bid on the project.
Quote.
Quote, thank you. Quote, that's why I looked at you. Quote on the project, using this source of funding.
Okay.
Let's see, how can you justify using water funds to pay for the bridge?
Because it's a, it's a reserve city water.
I see.
Body.
And our well is on the dam, and if the water, body of water didn't exist, we couldn't have our well there. So, two reasons.
That too.
Okay, so it's been moved to get a quote on this bridge replacement.
Second.
Second by Estes.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, any discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Melanie, I just forwarded you. I didn't see this till after our meeting. It's a trail bridge called rollingbarge.com that can span the width and, and I think that the reason the person sent it to me, it's someone in my ward, is you don't have to drain the lake, and therefore you wouldn't have as much fish kill and things like that that we might experience. Is that something that we can look into before going out for a bid? Because my guess is it would be quite a bit cheaper as well.
So, I mean, the
Sorry, for going out to quote.
Right, no, but the, I mean, we can, we can get a quote on, an estimate on the cost of the bridge. The, the property committee looked at that as an alternate, and there is still, the lake does still need to be drained, because you have the abutments that the ends of the bridge need to sit on, and so you have the concrete walls that go on the ends of the opening. And so in addition to the cost of the bridge, you also have concrete costs.
Did you look at this specific type, though?
Um.
Because I think that it alleviates the need for those types of expenses, I guess. Will you just take a look at it and let me know?
Yes, I will take a look at it. I'm just, there's a lot of additional costs in, other than just the bridge, that would not necessarily save any funds, but I will double check before we move too far.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Not, please call the roll. Tohill?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay.
And the fifth item on our agenda was 657A proceedings and funding, primarily 57 to 59 North Court Street. And since this has been going on for quite some time now, and if we would have maybe, we had to wait until the, the building was vacant for six to 12 months, which it has been totally vacant now for about 12 months. We're at the point now where we can move ahead with 657A proceedings. That can still be a long time out, but it can also spur activity on the sale or the repair of the building. So, we're hoping something gets done sooner than later. But at this point, we recommend that we, that we move ahead now with 657A proceedings. Nothing has really been done. I know, I was in an apartment across the street from the top of it, there's no glass in the windows in the back of it. I don't believe the, the building is secure itself. And I understand that the new roof they put on, that there's mold between the old roof and the new roof, so it's, it's not going to help the situation at all. So, so our recommendation is to move ahead with 657A proceedings on North Court 57 through 59.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I would second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Tohill, second by Kness, to move to go down 657A on that building. Any other discussion and questions? Not, please call the roll. Tohill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estes?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Guess that's all, that was number five, right?
Yep.
Alrighty, administrator and department reports. Doug, do you want her to go first? Okay. Okay, lots
So we're hoping something gets done sooner than later. But at this point, we recommend that we, that we move ahead now with 657A proceedings. Nothing has really been done. I know I was in an apartment across the street from the top of it. There's no glass in the windows in the back of it. I don't believe that the building is secure itself. And I understand that the new roof they put on, that there's mold between the old roof and the new roof. So it's, it's not going to help the situation at all, so. So our recommendation is to move ahead with 657A proceedings on North Court 57 through 59.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I would second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Toohill, second by Caness, to move to go down 657A on that building. Any other discussion and questions? Not, please call the roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously? Guess that's all, that was number five, right?
Yep.
Alrighty, Administrator and Department reports. Doug? Do you want her to go first? Okay.
Okay, lots going on. Out at Chautauqua, that you'll be seeing some activity out there.
Some of them came up.
The water and the sewer department are going to start installing those utilities this week. I knew the water for sure, the sewer. If they had some other stuff come loose, they were going to start on that as well. The indoor pool deck maintenance, they started draining the indoor pool today. And then we'll start bringing the humidity down in there. And I believe the contractor actually comes next week, so there's some labor that they, that the city is doing this week for the contractor then to come in next week. Then also, on the lead and copper service lines, there will be a lot more information coming out this, coming out on this. I will make sure to send all of you guys copies. So for all of the properties that had unknown or led or galvanized, there is a letter that the DNR requires us to send all of those properties. So we will make sure that you guys get a copy of that letter, because there will be questions. There is not a set date that the EPA or the DNR is saying that things need to be replaced. But we have to send letters out every year to these property owners until they get replaced. Just going to leave it at that.
I just might mention, because it'll probably come up, the locker rooms will not get, floors won't get replaced until next year. It's my understanding.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Because people might be asking, why do we still have these floors?
Yes, so the locker rooms are closed because they are replacing the doors between the locker rooms and the pool deck.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, just so people know.
The new bridge is
Excuse me, the lockers?
And the new bridge, yeah. Like I said, there's so much going on, I don't even play.
Lockers are closed.
Anything that's happened.
Locker room is closed.
I had the men's locker room this morning.
The locker rooms are going to be closed at the back center?
Um.
The men's locker room was open this morning.
And it may be that just the women's is closed because the contractor's a male and they don't care about you guys, I, no. I thought the locker rooms were closed, so.
The design is different also.
Yes.
So it's not necessary to close the men's locker room
Right.
to the same extent.
Yes. And then, so the last thing that I have, I put these as on the report so I could explain them a little bit more. We have two change orders to close out Highway One. We have the punch list pretty much complete. We have received most, the large portions of the reimbursements for Highway One. And so we have these two change orders, and then the retainage payment. So we are almost there, completing the paperwork portions of the projects. Change order 12 is a change order related to pavement thickness. It's a test that DOT does. Basically, when the con, when the concrete is the required thickness or a little bit more, they get paid 103%. When it is less than the required thickness, they get a deduct. So that, change order 12 is an increase of $41,252.89. But then change order 13 is a balancing change order. So this is decreasing all of the items that we ended, that we didn't use. Granular shoulder, modified subbase, sub drains, things that were put into the bid in case we needed them, and then we ended up not needing them. And so that is for a negative amount of negative $29,268.38. So the net, I left it back on the other page, back there. The net is like 11,000, I believe. Tom, you can probably do that in your head.
I don't remember the first number.
But, so I do need, the point is that the net between the two is very little and with, and within budget, we are able to maximize the tiff usage. So we kind of discussed this all along. Approximately 75% of Highway One was paid for with DOT grants, 10% with city cash, and 15% coming from the development in that area, the tiff area. And so we are able to capture all of that tiff. So that has worked out really good, and these change orders don't change anything there.
So Melanie?
Go ahead.
This is pedestrian safety month?
Yeah.
Could you walk us through some of the highlights?
You really want me to?
No, I don't.
Did you just want me to?
I really don't, I really don't.
Okay. I think you're looking for motions on these?
Yes, please.
So change order number 12, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Caness?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any questions? Go ahead and call the roll. Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. And change order number 13. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Estee? Any discussion? Please call and roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Now City Administrator Report.
My turn. I'll be quick.
Yeah, you've got one minute, it's almost nine.
I'll just say that Crow Creek Bridge is finally open. Thank you, Melanie, for the hard work and getting all this stuff done. But I also wanted to say, we are having, we're beginning our budget conversations for next fiscal year. We're talking about that with employees, but it's just the slow conversations right now of new needs. And I also wanted to say that Faith Reeves, Faith Reeves is here to, if you have any questions in regarding to the Resilience Action Committee, and she's been working on the Community Change Grants. If any of you have any questions, she's, she's here to, to do that. May I ask her questions as well?
So any questions for our City Administrator? And Orfe? Okay, great. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So can't.
Moved by Toohill, second by Caness. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. And I just also want to thank the community for good discussion and public hearings tonight.